Instructions for accessing subtitles in a language other than English are included on our board meetings webpage as well as in the description below. Instrucciones para acceder a los subtítulos en un idioma que no sea el inglés se incluyen en nuestra página web de reuniones de la junta así como en la descripción a continuación.
Alright, good evening and welcome to the Ross Valley School District Board of Trustees regular meeting. Today is October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and I am calling our meeting to order at six thirty-one. We have three trustees present today in person at the Ross Valley School District office. Myself, Rachel Litwack, Daniel Cassidy, and Shelley Hamilton, Chris Landals Cobb, and Ryan O'Neil were not able to attend today. We also have cabinet members present, our superintendent Tyler Graff, Julia Walcott, Eric Sable, Chris Carson, and I think that's everybody. Okay, um, our meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube and the link is on our website and on the agenda. There is a sixty-second delay between the meeting and the YouTube livestream. An audio recording of the meeting will be made available to the public on our district website within seventy-two hours of the meeting. And with that, I will move on to our agenda. So our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance and the Democratic Reflection. Don't have one of those today other than to hope that everyone in Florida is safe. Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. It is time for us to adopt the agenda and time allocation. Did anybody have any changes or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda and time allocations.
No changes from me. I'd make a motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Shelley?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Alright, we have an agenda and time allocations. So our next item is communication. Public comment regarding items not on the open session agenda. Do we have any public comment today? Seeing none? Alright, thank you. I will move on to the next item, correspondence communication to the board. We had one email exchange there. We were all copied on that. And our next item moving along is de-presentation and/or action items. The first item here is the recommended approval of Resolution zero-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, affirming the month of October as National Filipino Month. And this is Tyler.
Yeah, so you'll see the resolution there. We again, like the last meeting, we wanted to affirm a National Hispanic Heritage Month, which was, I think, September fifteenth to October fifteenth. And now we would like to do the same for Filipino Heritage Month. So that's this month for the Filipino students and families that we have in our district. We want to celebrate you and make sure that you feel welcomed and cared for across our district.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No.
Do we have any, do you have any public comment?
Nope.
Okay. As a Pacific Islander myself, I was really happy to see this on here, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And we'll celebrate AAPI Month later in the year as well.
Do you want to make a motion? I will make a motion to approve Resolution zero-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, affirming the month of October as National Filipino Month.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Great, um, so I will say aye. Daniel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing and recommended adoption of Resolution zero-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, in the matter of sufficiency of instructional materials. Julia, go ahead.
Yes, um, so this is something that we bring to you every year. And it's something that needs to be brought. We need to have this public hearing within the first eight weeks of school. And this is all around ensuring that our students have the instructional materials that they need in order to be successful in school. And as a part of this process, I reach out to all of the sites, to our site principals, to make sure that we have everything that we need and that they haven't gotten any communications indicating otherwise. And all is well. We are in good shape and so staff recommends that you adopt the resolution for sufficiency of instructional materials.
Alright, so we need to have the public hearing now. So I'm going to open our public hearing. Education Code Section six-zero-one-one-nine establishes steps and procedures to ensure the availability of text and instructional materials. Accordingly, the governing board of the school district shall hold a public hearing or hearings at which the governing board shall encourage participation by parents, teachers, members of the community, and bargaining unit leaders interested in the affairs of the school district, and shall make a determination through a resolution as to whether each people in each school in the school district has or will have, prior to the end of the fiscal year, sufficient textbooks or instructional materials, or both, that are aligned to the state common course standards and are consistent with curriculum frameworks adopted by the California State Board of Education in mathematics, science, history, science, social science, English Language Arts, and is applicable in health and foreign language. Oh, I now call the public hearing open. Excuse me, it's six thirty-six. And now, audience members may now comment on this proposal. Do you have any comment? Alright. Seeing none, I now call the public hearing closed. It's six thirty-seven. So the next item would be for us to approve the resolution of zero-four-two-four, zero-four-two-four-two-five for sufficiency of instructional materials for two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five. Do you guys have any comments or questions for Julie?
No, I mean, this is, this is something that we do every year and that our district would be doing, whether or not it was a requirement because it's a good educational practice to do. So, um, I, uh, I don't have any comments other than wondering what the history of it was that was making it so official and that we have to do it, given that it, to me, it just seems like a, oh, that's what school districts do is they make sure that all the students have sufficiency of materials for achievements. But apparently, this was an issue at some point somewhere.
I think it's been a big equity issue in terms of ensuring all schools across the state have what they need. And so it's actually, it's very important. And, you know, I've been reporting on all of these different adoptions that we're engaging in. You know, the last topic that was listed on there is foreign language. And we now have just this year, a new Spanish textbook. But it is also important to know that it refers to instructional materials and not only textbooks. The language used to be really around texts, but there's now more understanding that teachers use a multitude, a variety of materials in different modalities for instruction.
Thank you for that. Very helpful. That's all. Appreciate it. Because it makes it feel, sometimes I feel like when we do these things that we do every year and we can do them fairly quickly because it's like, yeah, of course, it's nice to also understand the purpose and the meaning behind it so that if people are listening or somebody's wondering, why do they just keep doing that stuff that's like, yes, yes, yes? So it's really helpful to hear the equity behind it and everything, so thank you.
And having a child who is taking the Spanish language at White Hill, I really appreciate the fact that they were able to get new curriculum, textbooks, and other materials into the classroom so quickly. I know that they had a really strong Spanish one program, so the fact that it's being carried over to Spanish two is wonderful. So I appreciate how quickly that was done.
So in order to pass this, we are approving
The resolution.
adopting Resolution zero-four. That would be the motion? Adoption of the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Then I would make a mo, unless there's any other.
I don't have any other comments.
Then I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution zero-four dash-two-four dash-two-five. Making a determination that the state requirements have been met.
And I'll second it.
Great. Shelley?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Thank you, Julie. Alright, our next item is to receive for first reading revised updated board policies and administrative regulations.
Great, so I'll take this one. And what we're trying to do this year is bring all board policies for first reading, which will allow the public and the board to provide comment based on the CSBA language. We'll take that input that we get from you all, revise it, and bring it back at the following board meeting in the consent agenda for approval. So tonight is an opportunity for the public and the board to provide input on, in this case, the Title IX regulations that we're bringing. Eric's also working on getting a live link that's prominently displayed on the front page of all of our school websites for Title IX complaints. Largely what this does is there was a new law that was passed. It broadens the definition of sex-based allegations or Title IX allegations. Helps us with things like when to investigate, how to investigate, when to do notices. So there's quite a few policies here. Happy to answer any questions about these policies or take any input you all might have.
Do you have questions?
I just.
Please, yeah.
I don't have any question about the policies themselves, totally support them. I was just wondering about the choice to use non-discrimination versus anti-discrimination? If that's any, if that is part of the conversation? And I'm thinking of some of the conversations around racism and anti-racism and it being more of an active verb than a passive verb. And I don't know if that's relevant here or part of the conversation, but I just thought I'd ask to see if that was, if CSBA has any conversation around that or any thoughts.
That's a really good question. I don't know the answer to it.
Okay.
Essentially, what we've done is take the CSBA recommended language and we made it to where these first readings, when you go into the attachments, you can see exactly how the language has changed. I haven't had specific conversations with CSBA about the difference in that language, but I think it's a good, good question. I can look into that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I was just inquiring because it was one of the things that came to mind of like, how active do we want to be in advocating against discrimination? And whether there are implications for using one word or another?
Yeah.
That we should be conscious of in our policies.
That was actually one thing that I noticed when we were doing this is because you can see the line items where things have been changed. I really appreciated seeing that because I was able to compare what we had before and what they've made the changes on, but also the fact that we're doing the first reading as opposed to having it come to us and then us sending it back. So in this case, like, we can have input now and the public can have input. So I really appreciated the change in the process though, even though sometimes it's weird to look through like the line down stuff, but it made it more helpful for me because I felt like somebody, if they wanted to weigh in, they had a chance to do it now before anything was approved by us.
Yeah, and I want to thank Teresa Machado for that. She took a lot of time in making sure that those, CSBA doesn't send us that exactly the way Teresa's presented it. But what it does is it allows for a lot more transparency with the community and with the board about exactly how language is changing. So people can ask questions or provide input from there. So thank you, Teresa.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, super helpful.
Alright, um, do we have any public comments on this?
No.
Alright. Any other comments here? Alright, so this was just discussion information. So I will, thank you, and thank you, Teresa. And I will move this along on the agenda. The next item is to receive for first reading, updated administrative regulation and exhibit in series three thousand, Business and Non-Instructional Operations. This is Chris Carson.
This one is actually me. And did I just turn it off? I speak so quietly, I need to make sure the microphone is on. So most of the items within this particular policy and exhibit are just minor cleanup changes to how we inspect and what we're specifically looking at at the facilities. But there is one thing that I want to point out. It has to do with the restrooms and that currently, well, previously we were required to offer menstrual products for students in grade six through eight in our district. And there's a new requirement for that to go down to grade three. And then as we move forward in two thousand and twenty-six, you'll note that there is an addition in there that beginning in two thousand and twenty-six, we'll be required to also ensure that we have gender-neutral restrooms available to students. And so that's something we'll have to take a look at and see how we'll, how we'll get to that, but that's a new requirement as we move forward.
It's interesting because we don't have, we don't teach, I don't know, with the proper, like, health, education, life skills until the fifth grade. So then you're introducing this complex situation, not situation, complex, life changes, to third graders and fourth graders. So what's the path of educating students' families on this? That, wait, my third grader is being, I have no idea. Was there a thought about that? Is that? There is now. Great.
Good question. That's an excellent question.
I, I mean, I think that the items are being made available because in earlier grades,
Absolutely.
they may be needed. And we did have an initial conversation with principals just about how, you know, particularly within the boys restroom, to, you know, make this something that doesn't cause a lot of conversation amongst kids. I think it's really about being super matter-of-fact. You know, this is something that people use and, um, I think it's there for those who need it.
I think it does, but I, and, and like, not, not now, but in the future or when this rolls out, I, I think it does. It seems totally appropriate to do for the reality of our young people. And it also does seem like having it mirrored or paired with our strategies for health and life.
Yeah.
Yeah. Information that kids are getting so that, so that it does become just kind of like, oh, that's there. And now, and I know why because I've had conversations about it, that kind of thing. So I think when we go to implement it, to maybe just think about how it's introduced and how our curriculum maybe has an earlier age component, which if we're needing to have products in bathrooms, then we might also need an earlier age component for young people somehow that's developmentally appropriate.
Some of the groups that I'm associated with believe the fifth grade is too late anyway. So maybe there is, and I don't know, third grade's too early, but fourth grade seems to be right with this group of OBGYNs that I know. That seems to be a good time to introduce that concept of life, or human life development, whatever. So maybe there's something around just even moving that up a year.
Or something.
Yeah.
Just something to keep in mind.
It's an excellent recommendation. I think it's super important that we, uh, get a plan together about how to introduce the students in a developmentally appropriate way that we're not, you know, using high school language with the third grader, but we're using third grade language with our third graders about this. And we can talk more about that with our principals and teaching staff.
And it is interesting if the state is making, this is coming from the state.
Yes.
That if the state is seeing this as an important thing for, to do, that the state also isn't having an accompanying curriculum type of thing for.
State about health education and all of the different components of that, all the way from, you know, K all the way through twelve.
Okay.
And so it's, it's kind of diving into that. So that's something I'm thinking about is that, okay, I need to dig in and see where they're putting different things. They don't always specify the grade level. And then we do have, you know, the life skills classes that are delivered by our school nurse.
Okay, so the state curriculum that we look at does go developmentally all the way into the younger. Okay, that's good to know.
And even having someone like the school nurse come by and share a short lesson could be one of the ways we go about doing that.
Yeah, because I'm thinking like, if it's not introduced in a way that's very matter-of-fact and like practical, that I could see those being, like, the items might be wasted for other purposes. Because I know kids will use toilet paper to jam up things, so I'm just thinking ahead for like little kids, you know, I mean, I understand it. Yeah, it's like, oh, hey, look what we do, you know.
Unfortunately, it does happen at the middle school level too, but.
Yes, but we do our best there.
Yeah, I like the idea of kind of easing into a way that's thoughtful and we get input from the teachers who work with those kids and might have really good suggestions.
Yeah.
Alright.
Absolutely.
Cool, so this was just discussion in, in information. Do we have any public comment? Alright, seeing none. And we don't have any other further comments on this, I will move on. The next item is the learning tour update. Tyler?
Alright, so we are going to share a little bit about what I've learned. Today is day sixty-three of my tenure as superintendent in the district.
But who's counting?
No, I'm not counting. I promise. I'm enjoying it every single day. And I've done a ton of stuff to learn more about the district. I knew that, when I took the job, I knew the district was in a really good position, so I didn't have to come in and do like a turnaround project. I could take the time to listen and learn from the community about the strengths and the opportunities in our district. And today is kind of a snapshot, kind of halfway through my learning tour, of what I found. So we'll walk through that right here. It's on.
The suspense is killing me.
Yeah, it's killing me too. I think the battery must have. Great, there we go. So just a reminder that the objectives that I had in my learning tour were really to listen and learn because the district's in such a good spot. To address any urgent and important issues like the start of the school year, getting, setting the tone in the right way, and starting to address the budget issues that I, we all know are an issue. To do a lot of communication. This is part of that communication right here. I have something that's going to go out to the community either tomorrow or Friday that's more about that communication. And then I'll start strategizing where we might make changes towards the end of the year or in preparation for next year. And these are kind of my core values. As I'm going through the work, equity, excellence, and joy are the three things that I'm thinking a lot about. I'm looking for areas where we're implementing equitable systems, looking for excellence in the classroom and with all of our employees. And it's elementary school and middle school. It should be fun. We should be smiling and having a good time while doing it. These are, in addition to all the other meetings that I have and the emails and the other work, learning tour specific, I've had twenty-one one-on-ones with staff. I've attended twelve community events, had ice cream with all five staffs, visited twenty-one classrooms so far. I wish that number was bigger and I think that will grow quite a bit in the coming months. I've done fourteen parent meetings. Those are kind of one-on-one with parents. Had over three hundred and seventy-seven survey responses to a Deer Park survey and the pros and cons. And things are going well with the district and things that are challenges. And I've had nine other one-on-ones with like city leaders, police departments, other community-based organizations. So a lot of meetings, and this is kind of part of the data collection.
The Deer Park one is referring to what to do with?
With the Deer Park money.
Funding.
That's right. Thanks for being clear on that. I could spend all night just on this slide. There are tons and tons of strengths about the district. It's clear people are really happy here. And the number one thing that comes across in all of my conversations is that the strengths are all about the people. It's the people in the community. Almost every single person sung the praises of our teachers, our administrators, our classified staff, the strength of our community, the PTOs, the YES Foundation. There's a lot of positivity around the people and the community. Also a lot of strength around social, emotional learning, safe, inclusive school communities, the DEI work that we've been working on. Quite a few people just celebrate the fact that we have happy, kind kids in our school district and that's something we should be really proud of. Also, the enrichment activities, community and cultural events that we have, lots of hands-on learning, arts education. All that kind of enrichment stuff was another big highlight that came out. Um, and then lots of good communication between staff, parents, and administrators. Academic standards are set pretty high. You'll see later in the, in the slide deck, we've got some other people that might want us to increase those academic standards. So not everything was conclusive across the, the whole district. And then one thing that kind of shined above all else for me was the fact that we have really small schools. Our elementary schools are about two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy-five kids. That's really small for an elementary school district. It's expensive to run schools like that, but every teacher knows every kid, all the kids know each other, the principal knows every student. So it's a, it's a thing that we have that we're able to offer our, our families that not every district is able to do. Here's some of the opportunities that are emerging. Obviously, revenue constraints, academic rigor, special ed was a big topic of conversation. Culture of collaboration and trust was another big one. And then school lunches, although kind of a minutia, was also another topic that was brought to the fore quite a bit. So the way I've organized this is kind of on the left side, you'll see the opportunity or the kind of general consensus that I heard from folks. And on the right, some of the action that we're already taking to, to meet that. And some of that has been in place before I got here and others we've started this year. So with revenue constraints, this really is, I know we always talk about it being a budget issue, a budget issue, budget, budget issue. It's not a budgeting or spending problem. It's a revenue problem. Because of the way the state gives us revenue, it puts us in a really challenging position. I'll talk about that in the next slide. So teacher, this means a lot for teacher recruitment, retention, and salaries. We all want to pay our teachers better, but with the revenues we have, it's very difficult to do, do that. So we've got to find some creative solutions. We also have facilities that need support. Our, our fields, we're a huge topic of conversation when asking what to do with the Deer Park money. Our bathrooms have been getting upgraded and we need to continue to do that. Our buildings need a little bit of paint and care as well. And then making sure we have really great student programs, whether that's enrichment programs, programs to support our kids or challenge our kids. Those really need, need money to run those programs. So we've got an attendance campaign. The, the plan is linked there. I won't go deep into that. But when we send our students to, to, to school, it's seventy-five dollars a day. We lose close to half a million dollars a year from students missing school. The more you can send your kids to school, the better. We're doing lots of budget presentations. I've got a budget newsletter going out here this week to, to families. We presented to all of the teachers a couple of weeks ago. We're going to set a five-hundred-thousand-dollar goal for cutting the budget with our budget advisory committee. This won't go into action this year, but could be used next year, particularly if we don't get a parcel tax. We're partnering on a supplemental parcel tax. We're going to see if there's viability there. We're being really strategic about utilizing the, the proceeds from the sale of Deer Park. I met with a grant writer on Monday to see where we might be able to bring in some grant funds. Chris is going to look at changing the facilities use agreement this year to bring more revenue in that way. And then more long-term, we need to increase enrollment and a potential down the line. And this is in a few years of doing a facilities bond. I think that's in order to do things like gender-neutral bathrooms, paint our buildings, do landscaping, upgrade our fields, do the things that our community really wants, a bond is probably pretty necessary. Many of you have already seen this before, but this is part of the revenue constraints. You can see on the basic aid side, this is districts that get to keep their excess property tax revenue from their local property taxes. The TAM district up at the top gets twenty-one million dollars of excess property tax that they get to use for student programs, teacher salaries, benefits, upgrading the facilities, all these wonderful things that the TAM district is able to offer. And our students end up getting to be recipients of those wonderful products at the TAM district. And it makes it very difficult for us to compete salary-wise with our White Hill teachers and other single-subject teachers at TAM. And on the flip side, you've got the LCFF, folks like Sanofel and Novato, who have a, a large number of multilingual learners, low-income students, foster youth and homeless students that drive what's called supplemental and concentration funding. We don't have many of those students in our district, so you don't get much supplemental concentration. So we don't have much property tax revenue and we don't have many unduplicated students. So we're kind of at the bottom of that inverted curve, which makes it, this is why it's a revenue problem, not a spending problem. And I can talk more about that at our upcoming town hall on the twenty-second if you're interested in learning more about that. Academic rigor was one that came up, and again, this kind of goes both ways. I think some families really think that we've got a rigorous program here and other families want to see more. There's a perception of declining academic standards. And I think here in November, I'm really excited to have Julie present about our increasing academic outcomes. I think there's a narrative out there that standards are going in the wrong direction, but our teachers doing a wonderful job. And we're seeing some of the test results at the state level come out as above pre-pandemic levels. And we're eager to share that once it's released from the state. There's a desire for more challenging curriculum. One thing that we're seeing from our I-Ready implementation of our. Um, there's a desire for more challenging curriculum. Uh, one thing that we're seeing from our iReady uh, implementation of our interim assessments is that we have some students in our classrooms that are performing far above grade level. And that makes it challenging for a teacher to differentiate for a student who's below and maybe two or three uh, grade levels above. Um, and that iReady assessment's starting to see that that's a, a big need for us. Um, staying focused on the core mission of schools, I think is really important and we, we've done a good job so far this year. Staying focused on curriculum and instruction and improving what's happening in the classroom with our students. Julie's doing all kinds of stuff to make sure that happens and so is Eric on the special ed side. Um, and then I think a lot of parents just wanna know more about what's happening in the classroom. If you're not sending a bunch of homework in, homework to home or taking a bunch of student work home, sometimes parents have a question mark like, hey, what's, what's actually happening in the classroom? Um, and I think the more we can communicate with families, the better. So we're doing an excellent job with professional learning teams. Um, and that's basically like teachers collaborating around data to better serve their students, to plan lessons, to look where there might be gaps. Um, we're implementing iReady, which is that interim assessment program. We're piloting a structured literacy program in English Language Arts this year. There's other curriculum adoptions. We're doing classroom visits. Julie went out to a couple of classrooms, a couple of school sites this week to get into classrooms. I think some of the things we need to do is clearly define and implement homework policy, um, so people understand what's developmentally appropriate. Um, find the balance between academic rigor and social emotional wellness. This is elementary school. We want kids to be having fun and developing at a, at a rate that feels natural to them and not pushing them so hard that they're having social emotional breakdowns. Um, we need to define what rigor means. Rigor isn't more work. It isn't more homework, more worksheets. It's actually more complex work. Um, and collaborative work and kind of depth of knowledge type stuff. And we can talk more about that at another uh, at another board meeting. Special education, um, and academic support. So it's not just special education, it's actually maybe for a student who's struggling, who's not, doesn't have an IEP um, but needs extra support. That's part of this bucket. Uh, we have some strategic tier-two interventions, but we need more. And that means more personnel, which means more money. So it's a, it's a challenge that we have. We wanna offer more strategic tier-two interventions for our students, but we don't really have the revenue in order to offer those interventions at the moment. Um, at least not broader than we're already offering them. Uh, trusting partnerships with some families. I think we've got a lot of special education families or families that have students with special education needs that feel like they've got trusted adults working with them each and every day. And we have some families that um, wanna see more from us. And I think we'll look into, see exactly what that means and how we can move on that. Lot of financial obligations. Uh, we, we're starting to look into settlement agreements and non-public school placements. Eric's really done a deep dive into the data on that in the last week or so. Uh, right now, four point five percent of our special ed students are placed in non-public schools. The California Department of Education asks to keep it below three percent, so we're a little above that. Um, but the Marin County average is five point two percent. And actually the Sonoma County average is even above that. So we're, we're higher than we wanna be, but we're not wildly out of line when it comes to non-public school placement. So that was kind of a new, interesting finding uh, for me. All kinds of actions on the right side, I won't go through all of them, some of them I've already talked about. Uh, Eric did a special education parent survey last year, he'll do that again this year. We're hosting a special education town hall to hear more about that trust and what other supports parents might need on November sixth. Uh, I've actually attended an IEP meeting, I've got another one coming up tomorrow, actually. Um, so thanks Eric for inviting me to those. Uh, there's an inclusion collaborative that Eric and some of his team members are going to at MCUE because inclusion is something we're interested in digging more into. Um, and then just continued program exploration. Special education is really complex and in a small district like this, it's hard to offer a program that serves every student. Um, a district like Oakland Unified or San Francisco with fifty-five thousand students can offer a deaf and hard-of-hearing program without a problem where it would hard, be hard for us to offer a program to a single student. So that's part of the challenge with special ed. This was one that I heard a lot about in the summers, this culture of collaboration and trust. Um, and it's not just, you know, administrators with union partners, it's also, you know, the district. And I put that in air quotes, with the community, um, and just making sure everybody's kind of being transparent. So there's a huge desire for more transparency, that's part of what this presentation is, um, trying to be more transparent with the community. There's a real eagerness for authentic listening and collaboration. I've heard that from parents, union partners, from teachers. Uh, people want to, if you're gonna hold a meeting, make it feel like you're authentically lis- listening to the issue and then try to action on that issue. So, um, the Deer Park survey on how to use the money from Deer Park is an example of that, being transparent that we're using the money, asking parents for input on it and then actually using that parent input to bring an issue like our fields up the prioritize, prioritized list. Um, another thing I've found is that uh, in small districts like this, visibility is a real big priority. Having cabinet members out at, at sites, having the superintendent, the board out at sites is really important. Um, and there's more, there's interest in more frequent and shorter communications. Uh, this community definitely has an appetite for knowledge and uh, delivering in a way that's digestible is really important. Um, so we're trying to work on that to the best we can, although I just crafted a very long newsletter to go out next week, uh, tomorrow, so uh, hold on. Uh, some of the actions we're doing, we're doing a monthly meet and confer with our union partners. This helps us build relationship. We actually have a meeting scheduled tomorrow. This is where we can iron out issues ahead of time before they become grievances or challenges. We can just kind of talk uh, like colleagues because that's what we are, uh, to solve problems, being out of classrooms, uh, attending school events. Uh, I think it's important to express a lot of gratitude. There's a lot of really good things happening uh, at our schools. It's easy to focus on the things that are, that needing attention and needing to be worked on. And we need to take the time to say like, wait, we're really lucky in the Ross Valley School District. We've got fantastic teachers, great kids, a strong community. We need to name that more. Um, doing the budget presentations is all about transparency, the com- commit, committee meetings. Uh, parents' square communications, I'm doing my best to keep them short and concise and as frequent as possible. Uh, principal updates, we're, we're doing that a little differently. We've reduced the number of uh, meetings there. And there's some other things there you can see. And school lunches, this is a hot topic. I've heard this one.
It's a lukewarm sometimes.
It's always cold.
It is a hot topic, uh. And uh, one of the things that I just wanna put on record is that when we went out for the Lunch Master uh, contract last time, Lunch Master was the only people that would contract with us. So we didn't have any choice. This is who we had to work with. Um, we've heard, you know, a lot about that lunch. I've eaten, I think, three or four of the meals at this point. Um, so I'm testing it as well. Uh, a lot of the food is wrapped in plastic and I think aesthetically that turns people off, especially in a community like Marin. Um, and the limited number of providers is really challenging, so. Uh, we're already visiting other school districts. Uh, Chris just went to go see Lagunitas. They're working with a really good, uh, I think it's Conscious Kitchen. Um, and we're gonna go down and see Sausalito Marin City and see what they're doing as well. Uh, we're gonna put out a request for proposal for other providers. I think there are more providers in the pool now, so we'll have some choices. Eric's gonna work with the Wellness Committee to kind of narrow down a couple of the options and maybe even do some testing from, with parents to see what options we could bring to the board later in the year. The challenge here is you've got a ton of federal requirements with lunch program. The costs are really high. And you're basically offering a full meal to a student for like a dollar fifty, which is a challenging thing to do these days. Um, staffing, we have very limited staffing for our lunch program and facilities. Uh, some, someone like uh, Santa Fe City Schools has a full kitchen to do scratch cooking. We do not have facilities like that. So we've gotta choose a program where we aren't doing scratch cooking, although that's what our community would love. We would need completely new facilities and new staff in order to do that. So, um, that's gonna be part of the conversation we have this year. Is there one slide back? These, uh, these are some other things that I've noticed and really in talking with Cabinet. This is really my leadership approach and things that I think I've noticed. So one of the things is I feel like there's, I tend to be someone who tries to be efficient and I think there's a desire for some efficiencies in the system, whether it's our decision-making process, the way we're communicating conversations we're having, that seems to be one. Uh, accountability in regards to expectations, having direct, clear conversations with our administrative staff or teachers, one need be, um, that accountable and holding people accountable to those expectations is something um, that I'm looking to implement here. Uh, a desire for more transparency, that's been the way I've always led schools, um. Uh, do my best, I'm always open to feedback. If I'm not coming off as fully transparent, I wanna know, um, early and often. Uh, making sure we have structured meetings to authentically engage people. And this could be something as formal as the Budget Advisory Committee to make sure that feels like a really authentic engagement for people. All the way to like making sure I meet every other week with every cabinet member, so they have a dedicated time to express their concerns. Um, share the projects they're working on, as opposed to the kind of catch-as-catch-can, catching me in the hall as in running between meetings, but giving some dedicated uh, meeting time to those folks. We have some amazing administrators across the district. I wanna double down on that. And I think it's really important to build capacity among them. Some of them are sitting in this room tonight. And we need to be able to delegate that work to them, allow them to spread their wings, make decisions without me you know, telling them what kind of decisions to make. And if they make mistakes, that's okay. We'll learn from their mistakes and we'll go back, we'll correct them, we'll apologize for them and we'll move forward. But uh, capacity building is something that's really important to me. And I think we need to do a little bit better job with our forward planning. So thinking about something as simple as setting up dates in like May for the following school year or getting a PD plan in place or even having a really crystal-clear vision for the district. So parents are following our vision, as opposed to our engaged community kind of making up their each individual vision and then we're kind of playing whack-a-mole before we're, so we're kind of looking behind us instead of in front of us. So those are some of the leadership approaches that uh, I feel like I need to apply to the team we have. And here's some next steps. We're starting a facilities walkthroughs. Uh, we did two of them, uh, Chris, Des and I uh, at White Hill and Manor this, this week, which was really great. We've got our two town hall meetings coming up on the twenty-second and then on uh, November sixth. We're starting our budget advisory committee in a couple of weeks, we're excited about that. Our Parent Guarding Equity Task Force is right around the corner. Um, and then doing, I'll do another Listening Tour update like this uh, sometime in December or early January. Tada. So that's it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. I just wanna be super transparent that I've told Cabinet to keep their presentations to ten slides or less and ten minutes or less, and I failed at that uh, on this first attempt. So I will do better next time to keep it uh, to ten slides and ten minutes.
Do as I say, not do as I do.
That's right, my ten. You're, you, you've got big spectrum there to cover too, so appreciate that.
The academic rigor is interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause college campuses are seeing this as well. Like, wait, these kids can't write. They write, they used to write real good, now they don't write very well at all. Um, so I wonder how that is nationally and if we're seeing it in college campuses, what does that mean for like the fifth grader, sixth grader or middle schooler? And what does it look like then at Archie? Yeah, so that's just a, that's just a, a thought.
I actually read an article in EdSource, I believe it was, earlier this week, that talked a little bit about um, how grades and grade inflation has really impacted academic standards at that high school and matriculating at college level where there's a lot of bias in grading, where people are putting in participation and uh, attendance into the grade which really doesn't have a, a, any reflection on the academic content mastery that students have. So things like uh, standards-based learning and other approaches at the elementary and middle school level can help with uh, with that.
And I just, what I found interesting was that you clarified it's a perception that is not necessarily the reality. That when you look at the way that the students in our district are doing, they've, they are rebounding pre-pandemic. But that the perception is the opposite direction. And I'm also wondering whether there is a lot of media out there about the learning loss from the pandemic and, and students not doing well in a very general kind of way. And so when you take that general perception, maybe that's what's, I don't know if you have any other specifics about where that perception is coming from.
But parents also saw what school was like during the pandemic. Oh my god, this is school?
What I'm saying is it's carried.
It's not a realistic, no, that wasn't school, that was Zoom school. We know that wasn't the best delivery method.
But they're still thinking that students are doing, like that rigor has gone down, when actually and so I was thinking about where's this perception coming from. The only, the one thing that came to mind was there's this general
There, there is.
messaging about it.
But if young people today aren't, don't have the same level of communication and writing skills that they had twenty years ago. I am old, right?
I think another factor too is sometimes when people look back on their schooling in the eighties or the nineties or the seventies and you, uh, you saw lots of homework, you equated that to high academic standards. But that's not really how we define high academic standards these days. It's not about the amount of homework you have and how much you're working at home. It's about the complexity of thinking and can you connect this idea to another idea out of context? Can you summarize? Um, there's all kinds of complex thinking that our teachers are asking our students to do. Um, so, and I don't think we've done a good enough job marketing how great our schools are. I mean, I think that's part of what we need to do. And Julie and I are sitting on the edges of our chairs, ready to present the CASP data to you once it's released from the state. Or, or there's some opportunities there, but there's a lot, a lot to celebrate.
And I appreciated also the idea of needing to define rigor, kind of what you're talking about right now, is how do we collectively define what rigor looks like? Because there is a part of mastery that is practicing something. Multi- like getting to that complexity level also requires a certain amount of mastery of practice, like playing sports. You can't just run out on the field and do the complex strategy things that you can do. You have to do the drills and then you have, there's a certain amount of that. So it's like rigor, it has a bunch of different pieces to it. And so I think having that definition that includes all of those different pieces is a helpful talking, conversation element. Um, to what does rigor mean and?
I was in a middle school classroom this week, a seventh grade English class and um, the students had finished their iReady testing and the teacher was having data conversations with every child and sitting and going over you know, exactly how they did in each of the different areas and then pulling in their student work. And to me, that's a part of rigor too, is really having that clarity and engaging our students in their whole learning process. So that they know what they're working towards, um, and they can see that progress. It's very motivating for them.
Self-evaluation, right? Reflection on how you're doing, what are your strengths, what are your weaknesses? That's a component of a rigorous education.
This whole con is fascinating to me.
You swim in this with your work.
Yeah, like I, like at my class at Dominican, I'm like, how are you, I need to, we need to work on basic punctuation. Okay, these are college students. So.
Well, and some of that is, is like what we're finding out with science of reading, right? And the programs that we're piloting this year are stronger in those foundational skills than some of the work that we have been doing. We've done a great, I truly believe we've done a really great job. Um, but we, there is more focus now on those discrete skills.
The whole thing is fascinating. The homework policy? My second grader's coming back. I need to, I need to read for twenty minutes a night, that's my homework. Absolutely. We now have a homework policy. Every kid in elementary school should read a certain amount of minutes a night. Done. Pick any book. Just read.
And that, that's actually, a lot of the research shows that homework shouldn't really be more than ten minutes per grade level. So first grade, ten minutes.
Yeah.
Second grade, twenty minutes. And a lot of it should be free, self-interested readings. Um, and some other small things like practicing your writing, whether it's Um and some other small things like practicing your writing, whether it's your handwriting or a three-paragraph essay. Um those things are kind of where it should be, but if, if your fifth grader is doing more than an hour of homework, it's too much.
The other thing I, that, that one of the first slides where you uh were talking about. The positive feedback about our schools and the phrases and stuff that you had on there, that was really like that was. One takeaway that I felt this was really good at was how it painted a picture of what our schools are. And helps kind of dispel the traditional public school narrative sometimes that's out there about. The schools and really shows the, all of the rich, nuanced, joyful. Hands-on, like just the word, the hands-on, the social, emotional. Uh it does include academic standards, but it's one of all of these different things. And so I just really thought that this slide helped. Like you're talking about communicating all of the really interesting, great arts and enrichment and everything that's going on. Because I think that's sometimes been some of the challenge when people think of tradition, like traditional schools. Um so this was great.
We have a very balanced, enriched program in Ross Valley. There's no doubt.
That was great. And then the challenge is a differentiated differentiation. I mean, I, that came up in a couple of different places. In terms of small schools, differentiated learning, additional supports for tier twos. Special education is a method of differentiation and being able to provide that scaffolding and supports for students where they're at. And where they need it is um is all, is like you said, the spectrum of who you might have in a classroom from. Two grades ahead to somebody who really needs one-on-one instruction is really challenging for teachers. Um so the more supports that we can give them for that differentiation, hundred percent. And it was very well articulated, so that was very helpful.
One, one thing, um just on this topic, in terms of um. You know, what it means to create environments where all students can uh experience. Um uh you know, deeper learning. Every child is coming in with a different set of. Experiences and needs, um and that, you know, um could be day-to-day or it could be something. Um you know, more intrinsic to, to who they are, um their strengths, their particular challenges. And so today at Brookside, um our occupational therapist um gave a presentation. On sensory strategies for the classroom. And so, and this, this has happened many times in this district. We've had. Our OTs do, um when we've done like um conference-style PD days. Um they'll give presentations that, you know, for general teachers. Um and so this is, we've been talking a lot about this, how like the disproportionality plan is really just the L cap.
Mm-hmm.
Um you know, or an offshoot of it, a little, you know, sort of branch of it. And um you know, the same is true for the work that we're doing on the wellness committee. All of that is, is, is really related. Um uh so, and, and the, what special education does, for example. Uh multi-sensory reading strategies that support students with a dyslexic profile. Those methodologies and curricula benefit kids in general education and our intervention teachers and our ELD teachers are. Trained in those methodologies. So it's all one big soupy um fiesta of um, you know, expertise. And, and I think that it's really critical. Um cause sometimes I think the conversation around rigor, I know this is true for us in Larkspur. Um when I was principal there, is that it's a zero-sum game.
Hmm.
Like if we have heterogeneous classes and there's students that aren't as like, you know, academically gifted as, you know, my. My little angel, um then that means my little angel is losing out. And I think that part of what we have to do as public educators at large, the many millions of us. Um is to reassert what we're here to do. We're the commons. We're one of the last places in society where people, all people in the community. There, there's no application. You come, you get registered, you're in. Um and so, and you. Um student have a contribution to make. Now, of course, we're not perfect at meeting every need for every kid every day. Um and I challenge anyone to identify the school that does that. Um but um, but things like this, I think, are just a little snapshot into how I think it's, it can. Um contribute to a bit of a, a rigid mindset about like, well, special ed does this and then we do this over here, but really. The truth is, we see our colleagues all working together, collaborating with each other and um. You know, and this was, this was one cool example of that.
Thank you. That's, I think that is a really great example of how sensory learning can benefit all students. Uh in different ways, for different reasons and also building that appreciation of different learners. In the classroom, cause that's life when you go out of the classroom is you are gonna be with lots of different people who have different circumstances and. Different abilities and different skills and different challenges. And so learning through your education. Um to learn together with everybody that's there is a great skill to have as well. So thank you. That's great. I have one other question.
Mm-hmm.
On the hot topic of cold meals. And this had come up, I don't know how many, when, when it was, Chris, you might know this. When the state changed the policy around universal meals.
I think that was two years.
Two years ago. Um and I know this came up in JALAC. Um when it was happening and some of the unintended consequences of that, which we all support completely, universal meals. But it had a financial impact and it also had, I think you had given us some statistics once about. People asking for lunches but then not picking them up, but then we still have to pay for them and. So that's just something I think to keep on our radar about how we can. Work with those kinds of, of issues of being able to improve quality, maintain the universality. But maybe communicate with families, like, don't ask for it if you're not gonna take it, cause it costs money and it precludes us from increasing the quality. If, so anyhow, it's just another thing to keep on our radar. And that we can continue to bring to JALAC, cause I don't know, maybe there's some. It hasn't been brought up lately insofar as the legislation goes, but it's something to maybe ask again. If there's any shifts going on in terms of funding or legislation.
But I mean, Miller Creek had a wonderful meal program. Couple of years ago and they had to rip it out to go to that. So they're, they're suffering like a loss, like, oh my god, we had something great. We had fresh meals, we had local sourced. So it's, again, it depends on facilities and what you're able to do in the community. So it is, it's a.
Yeah.
Understand the issue we're trying to solve. And one size doesn't fit all. And so, you know, it's not working great for us and it's definitely not working well for other districts as well.
Yeah.
But more kids are getting fed, so that's.
A great thing.
That's a great thing.
Universal is good. One-size-fits-all is hard. How do you do both? Um so.
Any more questions for Tyler?
What's great?
Do you have any public comment? No, no public comment? No comment on food? Are we, do we, do we have a way that we're, are we like giving away the food or donating it when it's not used? I don't know if we can look at that. I'm just curious to see what, what's.
Sounds like Tyler takes it and eats it.
We actually do not have the ability to donate the food because it's prepackaged and already heated. So that's one of the disadvantages of it. So even bigger reason why we wanna make sure that. If the families order the food, that the children pick it up.
Yeah, but I pick up six sweatshirts a day at Brookside. Or can you get, they're not gonna remember, they don't know, like.
Yeah. It's.
You, you can't put it on the kid, can you? I don't know.
Food, food waste is a real issue.
Yeah.
It is.
Maybe something the green teams can pitch in and help with. I don't know.
All right, well, I think if we have no public comment and no further comment here, we can move on.
Good present. That's a fun conversation.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate being here today. Um our next item is consent actions. We have one item, recommended approval of certificated classified administrative personnel actions. So we have one thing there and we can do this all in one motion unless there is any public comment or questions. Tyler, okay. Do you have any public comment on this one? No, nothing on consent? Okay. So I will entertain a motion.
Uh I'll recommend that I approve the personal personnel actions as presented.
Motion, I will second, can you say it? I'll second it. All right, so Daniel.
Aye.
Rachel, aye. Shelley?
Aye.
All right, so that is approved. Um next item is board business, committee updates and reports from, and announcements from trustees. Anybody have stuff to report?
We had an effective effectiveness committee meeting this morning at seven thirty.
Efficiency and effectiveness.
Efficiency and effectiveness committee. Cause my last one, the first one I attended a month ago, I was like, what, why, we're, we're not talking about any type of shared service, like this was, what are we doing? So today was all about how do we, how do we communicate? How do we share these services? What are we doing well? And it was a really, it was, it was a good conversation. And they almost wanted to break us up into, hey, which school districts have a lot of money? Which ones have a lot of money over here and which ones are struggling, right? Us and Miller Creek and. Larkspur quarter Madera, the gentleman there is running it. But it was a, it was a, it was an effective meeting. And I expect more to come out of my involvement with that throughout the year.
You're gonna be chair, you're gonna be chair by the end of the year.
But the heat math is good, like what are we actually doing to share services? How much money are we saving or what resources are we, are we sharing? Like tell the community, what are we doing with the district that has, what, sixteen school districts? How are we coming together in what regard? So it was um, it was a good way of starting my morning. So then there was some interesting stuff with JALAC too.
And then we rolled right into JALAC.
The cell phone policy.
Yep.
Um. What was the other one? The um, that was the one that caught my attention the most as far as like kids with devices. But what does that look like? Does that include watches that are now smart phones?
Yeah.
And then Shelley brought up, well, if there's an emergency, kids' phones are all in a bucket at the top of shop class. How do you get in touch with? People you need to get in touch with? So it's, it's challenging stuff.
Yep. No, it was a good overview. Again, legislatively, it's the end of the um. It's the end of the legislative season and so all of the bills that made it through the legislature. Um have gone to the governor and those kind of things. So it's, it's coming towards the end of the season there and. Kind of the overall summary was there were, it was, it was, this season was about on par with the number of bills that went through the past two legislature. It wasn't more, it wasn't less. Um. So there wasn't a whole lot of other educational stuff that was standing out. I did write down my SB. Thirteen fifteen, which is the list of lists, the lists of reports or the reporter reports, that's what it was. It's the reporter reports, so that's still going forward. And by March, Chris, just so you know, by March. The CDE is tasked with producing its report of reports. And then after that, there will be an evaluation of the re, meaning the report of all of the reports that LEAs have to submit. And then after the reported reports comes out, they'll start doing the evaluations of which ones maybe. Uh are extraneous and don't need to happen. So. That's the other thing that caught my eye and thought it might catch yours as well in terms of if you have input on that, that we can take the JALAC.
I'm sure it's caught Tyler's eye with all the emails he gets from CDE that says, this report is now due, this report is now due.
Well, now they'll have a report of all those reports that we can then start saying, hmm, do you need to do all those reports? So.
And we do have a lot that are due constantly.
Oh, yeah. Yep. And again, for a small district, back to the, where we are on that U. A small district with constrained budget, how much of that time do we really wanna be spending? Doing some of that reporting. So if there can be some efficiencies had in that process. All better.
All right. Um so I got to go to the White Hill Middle School Community Barbecue, which was super fun. They had like really good food there, um a lot of donated things. They had a yes thing. Um it was great. There was. The, one of the coolest things was that they had a White Hill um middle school band playing. And it wasn't like the band from the school, but it was like a rock band of kids who were students there. And they were just so amazing. They were. Out there. It was great. Um little loud, but I think that's cause I'm getting old. Uh so I was just really impressed. They did cover songs, they did their own original music and some of their music had really, really cute lyrics. They probably wouldn't wanna hear a rock band called Cute, but it was, it was, it was really sweet. Um so to all the people who organized that, they did a wonderful job and thank you. Um had a good time. I also attended Falla Palooza this Saturday. Um that was at the Santa Fella Elks Lodge and it's just, it's a wonderful venue. Um there was a lot going on. There was a silent, or a silent auction that was organized. And so there were like a ton of really cool things that were up for auction. They had uh two different bands, they had two different DJs, they had like games, there was like a ping pong table, there was like cornhole, there was like a lot to do. Um so I just wanted to say thank you to the YES board and all the folks who worked on that, cause that was a lot of work and it came out really, really nice. Um and then last night was the YES board meeting. Um so a lot of the time we spent going over Falla Palooza since it had just happened and it's kinda like, hey, what do we wanna change for next year? What do we wanna keep? Um they, they did a financial report. Um the financials are looking really positive for this time of year for YES. Um almost double what they had raised at this point in the time at the school year last year. So almost double. Yeah, it's, they were really excited about that. Um I was too. So their, their fundraising is just, I don't know what happened, but it's been kicked up a notch. Um and just, they're doing really well. They are also interviewing for a new executive director and that is also, it's in process. So hopefully they'll be able to announce something um soon. Um and then this morning, I was at Wade Thomas for their Wednesday welcome. They had like a, three to fifth graders were given awards, which is really sweet. Um their students have a thing where they have identity bags and so they decorate the outsides of these paper bags and they, they just like. They put their identity, how they feel they identify on the outside. Then they also put things that you wouldn't see on the outside, inside the bags. And then they share them out, which I think is extremely brave and it's so wonderful. So um just wanted to shout those kids out. Yes, and that was everything those two weeks. Yeah.
There was one other event that I went to, it was a community event. It was the Fairfax Town Picnic.
Oh.
And, and I went to that, I forget how many, was it this weekend? It was the weekend before or so. And um. And then having, and then the, on the avenues and I was, I'm thinking, I'm wondering if it would be helpful. To have maybe something we could do, just collect a list of all the various town events and. Occurings and to have that kind of in our back pocket for where are the parades, where are the picnics, where are the outside of the schools? Um just for us as a school district to also, you know, build those relationships and whatnot with the town groups. So.
Yeah, cause Rachel pulled us together to do the parade in San Salmo, whatever, a month ago.
Right.
And it's like, great, who, who can we get to wear the costume? And people were like, hey, we didn't know this was going on. So it's a really good call out of, of those things where we can. This is what's going on in the community.
I was Tyler thinking of your thing of like getting the schedule in May for next year comment about. The school stuff and that like, that thing for us to think about having a calendar of as well.
Um I, I, I wasn't here two weeks ago, but I went to Walker Creek. Uh Tyler came out right after. That's my first experience with Walker Creek. It was exceptional. It was great. Brookside fifth grade does it earlier in the year. So that the students bond with each other. They don't go with another school from Ross Valley, which is a little bit of a miss. But it brings those fifth graders together and the teachers really like that component of it. Uh so it was a really cool experience to meet the staff out there, the location of it, the facilities. It was, it was, it was a really good experience. So. I'm thankful for the parent communities that are able to sponsor that, cause it's expensive. It's not cheap for the students and the parents to, to pay. Um but it was really well done.
I heard that M, that Marin County Office of Education has been doing some facility um work out there and that it might. Soon also have the ability to do like small conferences or offsites, which might be something to think about, like if you're gonna do a staff retreat. Or something like that. I think that's in the works.
Yeah, facilities were, were nice. Like there was, it was good enough for what you would expect of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it's good. Yeah, so it was a cool experience to be able to go as, as a parent. Yeah, so it was a cool experience to be able to go as, as a parent. Um, but also with that lens of, hey, these guys are running a really good educational program. The naturals there are great. Right? So it's a cool experience for them to come from all over the US to work there for a year or two. So.
Lots of invertebrates.
Lots of invertebrates.
Alright. Um, so moving on, we have the approval of the regular meeting minutes for September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Do you have any questions, comments?
Can we approve them when it takes the two of us because Daniel was not here?
I mean.
I mean, it can't.
Technically we could, because if he's read them and he approves of it, then he could do it, but he wasn't here.
If I wasn't there.
Generally tend to recuse ourselves, so I don't think we could do this. Alright, so we have to bump this to next meeting.
Bring that to the next meeting.
Yeah, that's easy. Alright, so then we have superintendent cabinet reports.
Um, couple of things that have gone on in the last two weeks. Uh, I went to go see the White Hill Field last Thursday. When we had non-student day, so I got to go see that it was getting aerated, um, and dragged and some new, uh, some new dirt put on top of it. Uh, and we got to talk to Des a little bit about that and we've got a plan for improvement, kind of a six week cycle of aerating, dragging and seeding. Um, and you know, hopefully the water mains will stay intact so we can continue to water that field. Um, there's been just kind of the series of unfortunate events out there and we're hoping to get that field, uh, back to where we want it to be. I got to see some White Hill classrooms today, really impressed with the teachers that I saw. Um, fun to get in those middle school classrooms. Kids all really clearly understood what they were supposed to be working on. Um, just fun to interact with them. We started our facilities walkthroughs this week. We'll continue doing that next week. Uh, we had three hundred and five responses to the, uh, survey that I sent out about how to use the proceeds from the Deer Park Sale. Um, couple of things that are coming up and we'll bring this to the board in a future board meeting. Um, shade structures is a, is a top priority for a lot of the families. Preventative maintenance, I was really proud of our community putting that towards the top of the list. That is definitely a, a big need for us. Um, and the field repair was another big one at, at Brookside, at, uh, Manor and at White Hill, making sure those fields are, are taken care of. Um, we had negotiations today. I feel like we're getting close. It's very positive, very collaborative. I want to appreciate our union partners um, for just kind of the tone and tenor of the back and forth. Uh, it feels like a true negotiations. Um, and I'm eager to see where we can get that going in the next few weeks. Um, and then I just wanted to give the board a quick update on e-bikes at White Hill. Um, John and Mary Claire have done a very nice job working with Fairfax PD to do a little bit of a, uh, info session and registration for e-bikes. Uh, these really need to be class one e-bikes to be registered onsite. Uh, we went through the e-bike parking lot on, the other day, actually it was during the facilities walkthrough. And they were all class one e-bikes, really happy to see that. I didn't see a bunch of class two or class threes out and about around the school either. So, uh, both of the principals there report that that has gone, uh, well. And I think it's gonna take some time for parents to understand that staying away from that class two bike is really the way to go. Even if your kids are like really pressuring you to get the class two, say no, stick with the class one. Um, so things are going pretty well with that.
I think it really helps to have the school, I mean, to have that reinforcement on campus because then for parents who, you know, can be like, okay, we got your back on that if you want to. And you're, it's hard in a community to sometimes get that peer pressure.
Yeah. And the laws are changing all the time on this. So to go out and spend five thousand dollars on a class two and maybe not have your kid be able to ride it, it, you, it's, you've got to make a really informed decision on a purchase like that. Or at least I would. Uh, any updates from the board or from the cabinet?
Yeah, um, we had three different release days last week for various adoptions. Um, Monday we had a TK, um, we had our four TK teachers learning about creative curriculum, which is the program that they are, um, piloting, one of whom is here. Um, our TK leads in the creative. Um, and it, it was a really great day. It was fun. We got to play a little bit. It's a play-based program. Something that I appreciated was that the units that they have are, um, all really tangible. Um, the, the one that they're piloting is around percussion instruments, but they have others. They have one on cameras, they have, but everything that they, um, you know, it's all of your academics and, and SEL is integrated into the program. But the units themselves are things that are in the real world and you can touch them and you can interact with them. Um, so just, you know, it's, it's aligned with the preschool standards and just seems like a great program, but we'll see. That's what a pilot's for. Um, and then we had two release days for Benchmark, our ELA program, one for second through fifth grade and one for K two, or sorry, K one. Um, and these were demo days, so they had one of their, um, professional developers who was really great. Um, and she did kind of a pre-meeting with the teachers to talk about the materials and talk about a very specific lesson and then demonstrated it in a classroom. And then they came back and had a conversation about it and they did two rounds of that. So that was really helpful and we also had time for teachers just to kind of talk about how things are going and give each other tips. Um, on this kind of really big undertaking, this, an ELA program, you know, includes so many different components and they're piloting all of those components. It's phonics and it's writing and it's reading and, um, it's a lot to figure out. But that was great. And then I've been doing class visits and site visits, which is fabulous. I was at White Hill and Hidden Valley this week and next week I'll be at the other three sites. And so that's just exciting to see. Um, and we had a terrific delight, um, our teacher leadership group meeting yesterday where we kind of did a practice run for upcoming PD Day around priority standards and it went really well. Um, teachers gave really good and important feedback and input to make the day even better. And I'm, I'm just really excited to be moving forward with that.
Eric, you have any updates?
Yeah, um, let's see, um, couple of things just coming up. I, I mean, in the spirit of like being connected as a county, we have our monthly uh, special directors meeting next week. Um, and, and, and actually it, it's also Selpa that's hosting the Narcal Inclusion Collaborative with, which Tyler mentioned in his presentation. That's Friday and we're taking like a team of five or six of us. I'm, so I'm really excited about that. Um, you know, because inclusion is, um, you know, not just a culture, it's also a tangible pillar. Um, and this, this leadership group, this is a, uh, there's three big meetings throughout the year and then, um, uh, additional work including data collection throughout the year. Um, and like I talked about before, it's gonna inform all our many little buckets of, of plans. Um, so I'm really excited about that and just really appreciate the staff, um, a couple of admin, a couple of teachers coming. Um, taking, um, time that they don't have to really give, um, to, to do this. It's gonna be really fun. Um, uh, then, um, spending, you know, a good amount of time to, um, uh, collaborating with uh, local private schools and families from private schools. Consultation around Title Two dollars, which is instructional improvement. So they, they, if they consult with us and have an appropriate plan, they can get an equitable share of those federal dollars. Um, uh, so I work with them on that. Also to, um, children that are privately placed that we're evaluating. Um, that's, you know, takes, takes a lot of communication. Actually, a shout out to MCOE as well, uh, and Selpa, they are supporting districts with a psychologist who's helping us do, um, uh, psychoeducational evaluations for children that are privately placed. Um, so that's, that's an example of a, of a, of a shared service that, um, that takes pressure off of our staff. Um, who, uh, are, are under pressure to be assessing kids in the district. Um, not to mention outside of the district. So, um, I want to appreciate them for that. Step two, disproportionate plans. Speaking of plans, like Shelley said, that's due tomorrow. So that's a lot that's gone into that, including great input from our principal team, uh, and cabinet, um, yesterday. Which I really appreciate. And lastly, on the topic of phones, um, a webinar in ten twenty two is Jonathan Haidt, the author that's been on all the talk shows with the anxious generation and ban all phones, phones are evil. Um, uh, and he wrote a, a bunch of other stuff too. And he's actually written stuff that, uh, you know, is all about, you know, play-based learning as well. So he's an interesting guy. He's in conversation with, uh, State Superintendent Tony Thurmond. So I'm signed up for that. I'm gonna bring the popcorn. That's eight AM on, um, Tuesday the twenty second. So.
That's separate from Dr. Levine who's speaking as well.
That is separate, yeah, separate from that. So.
Is, okay. Good stuff.
My net premise, I'll keep short. Um, with all of the work that we're doing out at the sites and, um, related to the field work and with all of the heat that we have just come through, it's hard to believe that, um, all of our inclement weather is just around the corner. The really bad storm that we had several years ago in, in twenty one, twenty twenty one, when we had the flooding at White Hill, that was really only about two weeks from now. So one of the things that our staff is also working hard on is ensuring that our sites are ready for the inclement weather that's coming in. So we're in the process of doing all of that. And then I do want to point out that we have a budget advisory committee meeting on the twenty first of October. Um, that will be at five thirty PM. And so that'll be the Monday prior to our next board meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that was out there for everybody.
Julia, one thought for all of the pilots that you're doing along the theme of appreciation and gratitude and learning more about them and understanding kind of where they're going in terms of that curriculum adoption and things like that. So I was thinking, we've done, you know, yeah, we've done a series where the students come in and do presentations. But I was also thinking that I would really enjoy and appreciate having some of the teachers come to our board meetings to present their feedback on all of these pilots. And also an opportunity for us to express our gratitude and thank you to them for doing it. It's great. I'd love hearing your reports, but I'd also really love to hear from the teachers, um, and even kind of giving us a little clip of kind of what they are and getting their feedback and, and also a way for us to express directly appreciation and gratitude for the work that's being put in on that. So I'm not sure where in the process that would go.
We, I typically, like when we, once the group has made a recommendation and we bring it to the board, there's usually teachers then
Got it.
that kind of demonstrate some of it and talk about the why. Um, we could think about along the way, but it also would be an extra evening for teachers, which.
No, I don't want to make any more, I don't want to make anybody show up any, I don't have to, but, um, if it's, if it's appropriate, that I just want to say, if it's appropriate, when and if it's appropriate, not more or less, but just.
I think when we bring it for approvals with board, that seems like a good recommendation to continue that practice.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Or I could work into one of those days when the kids come. Like, hey, this is one of those lessons that we do. Cause then you're not, then they're already gonna come. I don't, I just don't want teachers to come actually.
No.
Alright, so, let's see. Next item is future board topics and board direction. Anything anybody wants us to look into that we haven't already given Tyler direction for? No? Alright. Um, I I was talking to a former board member in another school district who mentioned doing a newsletter. That didn't just go out to the student families, but to the whole community that they served. And I was wondering if we would have the ability to do that. I don't know how you can get that information, but I thought it might be good because then we can let our community know, hey, look at all these cool things we're doing. It supports your property taxes. And it kind of just gives them an idea of what we're doing with all these things. Like, hey, look, we're gonna do these fields and, you know, just to give the community an idea.
Especially with the Deer Park proceeds, right? That was a big community.
Yeah, and I, I did put that out on social media to everybody. So it wasn't just our school families who had access to that. And I did receive like gratitude for that because you know, neighbors of the schools who don't have children would want to participate. Anyway, so I just thought it might be a good way for us to start connecting with everybody.
Cause parents where I have an option for adding people that aren't parents in the parent household.
Sitting on my desk from Kentfield that was given to me by, uh, John that they mail out. I don't know if they're mailing out just to families or if it's to everybody, but it's a, a color twofold, two-page, back-to-back. Uh, and it's, there's a message from, uh, Superintendent Rose. There's a message from both of the principals. There's a little bit about what they're doing with facilities and curriculum adoption. So it's something that we could probably put together. And we could probably do a little bit of cut and paste with some of our board updates that we've done and some of the presentations we've done. Um, I just have to look into the cost of making it look nice and setting it up if it wasn't a PDF.
Cause we get emails from the town manager from Santa Anselmo about things that are going on. So once there's something in Fairfax as well, so they obviously have lists.
Well, they've got a, they, there's a, on the website, it's like, if you'd like to be on our newsletter, click here and sign. That's what I was wondering is whether with, whether you can have a group in Parents Square that is like, hey, if you'd like to be, if you want to get the emails that all the parents are getting, just sign up here and we're happy to send them to you. Even though you're a community member, maybe who isn't a parent, but it's a self-opt-in
Yeah, I wonder how.
button or option, or something like that, maybe?
Kentfield does go to hold their constituents.
Yeah.
There's something I talked about with a couple of people this week. Uh, John gave it to me, I think on Monday. Uh, so yeah, it's definitely something.
Cause email would definitely be cheaper than having to mail things and easier and less time consuming. Um, and then people could just opt in on their, type in their.
And just kind of thinking back to the feedback that I've received about more frequent, more concise. A newsletter like that is a little bit longer, but, uh, Julie and I were talking a little bit about the difference between an email and a print copy. I don't know about you all, but when I get an email from a company or from an alma mater, most of the time I delete it. But the second I get that Chico State, you know, flyer in the mail, I usually sits on my coffee table for a little bit and I read it a little bit and I engage with it a little bit more than I do the emails. So it might be a little more bang for the buck if we send something out physically.
Yeah, if we're trying to move forward with the parcel tax, I think having the whole community kind of see, here's the good work that we're doing.
Cause there's a lot of good work going on.
Mm-hmm.
A lot.
And you could put just short summaries with that. Go to this teeny URL to read more, go to this teeny URL to read more.
Find a parent that could help with the layout.
Good recommendation.
Well, one last thing, it's quick. Uh, I've had talks with various parents about our logos. And so there's just something, like some people are thinking, hey, yeah, we changed logos for schools or the district or something like that. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah.
Not a crit, not an important thing, but there's enough people talking about it that I heard about it. And, uh, we got a lot of smart graphic design folks.
The banner we made.
I don't want to be like the person who's been on the board forever, so. It's a very interesting evergreen. I was just thinking about this the other day. It's an evergreen type of conversation as you get new people coming in who kind of have their opinions and, uh, uh, my one, one side saying a logo is a thing, this should stay, it's a brand, it's a thing, it's a durable thing. And then the other side is like, why? I mean, if you have new community members, new families, maybe it's an okay thing to have.
In the valley of Manor.
Evolve. I don't know where I land on that, but it's interesting that it just, twenty years later, since Manor had four or five logos.
I, I'll talk to our principals about it and see. I, I think there have been some new logos created.
That are not trademarked.
Recently, so.
White Hill's is brand new.
Like if I think about a private school and if we're trying to, you know, show the community the quality of our schools, a private school, it is a kind of a brand. It is something that lasts for a long time, that doesn't change year over year. But I'm sure there's a lot of cute otters we could find during the logo.
We've been a, Manor's been a acorn, an otter, a tree, a cougar.
Well, they actually changed the mascot, the actual mascot, not just the look.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. I, those are the four different mascots over the, however many years. So.
Which school is gonna be Mudane? A little hippo. Or the huddle.
So I think it's an interesting, I mean, I, it is an interesting kind of creative tension of community engagement. Cause it, it really does show an engaged community wanting to adopt and express kind of how they feel about their school. Wanting to adopt and express kind of how they feel about their school, which is a wonderful thing. And yet, if one does not want to be continuing to change your.
I'll only bring it up cause there's a bunch of brilliant people that could do that.
And there were twenty, twenty years ago.
Easily. Yeah, yeah. No, no, absolutely. Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Alright, so I think we've given you a good direction.
There you go.
Onto that for a little bit.
Great.
There you go. Alright.
I thought of that one too.
We can just paste the new logo over the banner. It'll be fine. Alright, um, meeting to brief, any comments, questions there? If not, I will, uh, make a, a motion to continue past thirty. No meeting to brief stuff? No?
I appreciate the conversation.
Yeah. And the brevity. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting at eight oh one.